Hello, can you guys hear me?
I can.
Okay, good.
Afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
John, Don, Daniel, Steve.
Yes, sir.
I see the President, Greg.
Good afternoon, everybody.
How you doing?
Everything's good, Larry. Thanks. How about you?
Not bad, not bad at all.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Chief. Let's see. Just Director Jensen left.
Director Quinn.
Director Quinn and Director Jensen not here. Anyone else we're expecting besides those two gentlemen?
Let's see. We've got one, two, we have a couple more. One more supervisor.
Can you hear me?
I heard somebody say, can you hear me?
That was Bill.
Hey, Bill.
We just can't see you, Bill.
Yeah, I can't see myself either and my computer's putzing on me. So I'm around.
That's good to hear.
Well, I will keep track of the attendees as they come in, so hopefully.
Yeah, it is 3:31 according to my clock and I'm sure President, Vice President Roberts is itching to start on time, which we're already late, so let's move. There's Director Jensen coming in, that's good. I don't, I haven't seen an agenda for this. I think we're just going to turn it over to General Counsel and run with it.
That would be the plan. Good afternoon, everyone. Let me get my screen up there. Okay, everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Indeed.
Okay, great. One of the shortcomings, though, Hamid and I did a little run through because I wanted to make sure all the technology was working, but when I go to full screen, I can't see everybody. So as we go through this, if you have questions, either raise your hand or if I'm just moving along and you're waving away or something, just shout out. So I stop because I want this to be participatory. Okay?
Okay.
So with that, let's just roll into things. One of the easy parts about doing this training is it's always easy for me to find more recent ethical violations. I don't have to look too far back. In fact, just last week, I've got a couple of examples for you. I don't know if you've been following this corruption case in LA City Hall, but it was essentially a pay-to-play kind of scenario where real estate developers were paying off certain council members, including Mitch Englander, to get their projects approved. Mr. Englander got caught lying, is going to jail, is paying fines, and the investigation's ongoing, and there are probably other people alleged. On the more smaller scale, local level, a longtime city council member, Richard Pacheco in Baldwin Park, also has been charged with accepting almost $40,000 in bribes. Interestingly, and don't get any ideas here, Chief, this was the police union bribed him in related to a contract in that city. So there are plenty of examples about bad actors out there. That's not our employees or officers. Why we do these trainings partly because we're required to is really to keep you out of what I call the Hall of Shame, and that's the FPPC, the Fair Political Practices Commission that monitors the more, I wouldn't say routine, but for lack of a better word, the smaller, the statutory violations that people often trip up, because when you become a public officer, public employee, you're subject to a lot of rules, and that's why we have this training here is to avoid getting into these situations. They have a little document called the heat map showing where a lot of their cases come from. Not surprisingly, a lot in LA County, but there's also a fair amount in rural counties like San Bernardino County, even San Diego County. It's these types of actions that we want to avoid. These are just some things that happen locally. Just down the road there in Bakersfield, city council member voted on a project where he had connections with the developer of this project. He got a $3,000 fine. Just last year, a member of the Kern County Board of Supervisors also participated in a decision in which she had financial conflicts. I don't have all the details of this one. It wasn't published yet. This was in their summaries, but again, this is a supervisor for our county. Besides doing the training, because we have to, because it's a requirement, I like to think of it kind of in the, in the manner, if you know this film or story about Moneyball, it's the Billy Bean, who was the former general manager of the Oaklands, came up with this new way to look at how you identify a team, and instead of picking people who are like the biggest hitters, things like that, he looked at things like their, their analytics, their percentages. And one way to think of this training is that we want to get everybody on the same page, what I call the onboard percentage. So instead of being on base, everybody's sort of onboard in terms of understanding the rules, what applies to them, because if one of us falls afoul, it creates a bad reputation for our agency. We have a lot to cover today. Here's an outline of the kind of five areas that we're going to go through. We're going to touch on briefly ethics principles in general, and then we'll delve into our laws, transparency laws or the Brown Act, Public Records Act. We're going to talk about meeting procedures because that's an offshoot of our public meeting process with the Brown Act, and then end with two fairly numerous areas of law where we're regulated in terms of financial interests and processes, as well as personal advantages and perks of office. These are your conflict of interest rules. So that's what we've got to cover. It's a lot. I'll say it now and I'll keep saying it. You're not required to remember everything. The document that I sent out in your agenda package, our sort of 16-page summary encapsulates most of the regulations that we're talking about today, and you saw how dense that was. The real purpose of that and this training too is really to just help you spot issues, to be aware of things, to know when to go to the manager, to go to myself, maybe the FPPC, if it's a significant issue, get advice, because if any of us does the wrong thing, there are consequences for that. And we also want to talk about just ethics in practice, not just the, the law side of it. So again, our goals are just familiarize yourself, ask questions about things, think beyond the box, and of course, at the end of the day, you will get your AB 1234 two-hour training requirement satisfied. Okay? Our overarching goal is to avoid these kinds of headlines. This was a water district, the Western Water District loaned one of its executives $1.4 million to buy a very nice house at agency expense with a interest rate of less than 1%. Whether that was lawful or not, it certainly doesn't do a whole lot to water customers or to the public that are funding those types of things. One thing to keep in mind about these rules is that particularly with respect to my position, I certainly want to ask what you to ask me questions. If you ever have a concern, am I doing the right thing? But keep in mind that our office represents the district. We don't represent you as officials or as employees personally. So if I, in the rare instance, were to give you wrong advice about something, you would still be on the hook, although it can be considered a defense if you reached out to different people and you got advice, but ultimately all of the things that we're talking about today rest with you, their potential either civil in terms of fines or, or possibly even criminal penalties for misconduct here. If we have a situation where there's a potential conflict of interest that we're not sure about, the only way that we can get protection for you is you ask for a formal advice letter from the Fair Political Practices Commission. That's sort of a get out of jail free card. If they tell you, you don't have a conflict, you're good, you can participate in this decision or take this action, that is the only thing that will protect you. The only problem with those, however, is that the FPPC can take months to issue these letters. So if we have something that needs to be done timely, it's very hard to get this kind of coverage. So you most likely have to not participate if there's any doubt, if you wanted to be certain about the results. And as I said too, at any time, if there's a question, I'm going to keep going, there'll, there'll be some kind of Q and A parts too, but please stop me at any time if you have questions about things. It's a quick summary of how ethics laws apply to us. First is the disclosure part. I believe all of you are attending this training because you file the Form 700. That's a disclosure requirement so the public knows what your potential interests are in terms of potential financial conflicts of interest. The second part is there are a lot of laws and regulations that prohibit certain actions. Some are going to be very bizarre to you. I mean, they, they make sense, but there are a whole lot of regulations out there, and there's a fair amount of enforcement that goes on too between the FPPC, district attorneys' offices, and even private enforcement. But before we delve into laws, I just want to talk about, there is a difference between laws that govern ethics and ethics themselves. A law sets what I would consider to be minimum standards. It's what we have to do. If I would look at it as the floor, but it's not the ceiling. In practice, you can go beyond what the law requires when it comes to ethical things. These are things that you should do. There's also technical distinctions between ethics in the law too, because there can be certain conduct that may be unethical, but it's legal. And there's certain conduct that could be ethical, but it's, it's illegal. Anybody have any thoughts on what some of those might be? But let's start with something unethical, but it's legal.
Putting in a stay-at-home order for the whole state and then going to a fancy dinner?
I think that one's called hypocrisy.
Okay.
But yeah, certainly when you're one of the top law enforcement officials, yeah, there's, there's kind of a dual standard. So.
I would say, I would just add, there seem to be certain perceptions of conflict of interest that may, or maybe this is a, maybe this is unethical but lawful rather than ethical unlawful, but in any event, certain, you know, it may not technically be a conflict of interest, but you should perceive it as such, so.
The, the one that Greg mentioned, John, or?
Well, that certainly I would, I would agree with that one, but, but.
Probably more on the unlawful side, because if it was a stay-at-home order, wasn't being followed. So that, that was sort of unlawful, unlawful. But you know, you could have something that's unethical but lawful. For example, one of your jobs is on, on the board is just like people for committees, and you could be presented with somebody who's a very close friend of yours, a neighbor, and then another candidate. The other candidate may be much more qualified, but you put your neighbor on the committee because you're friends. That's not illegal to do. They're both qualified in the sense of being residents, but is it the ethical thing to do? Other situations where we've actually had this in the past, where when you have a situation where the decision may involve somebody you're close to, they may not be a source of income for you, but the question becomes, can you make a decision free of bias that we're going to talk about? And if the bias, if your relationship with that person is such that you can't look at the bigger interests of the community, that's potentially unethical. And it potentially sometimes could be illegal too.
Perhaps trying to approve an easement, the, what do we call those easement violations, encroachment for a friend, but not somebody you don't like, something like that?
Yeah, yeah, just disparate treatment for people, for sure. And another example, though, of something that may be ethical, but then it's unlawful, that we'll find out later, is that it's actually illegal to loan people within your agency money. So while you may, somebody may need a short-term loan to get to the next payday, there's actually prohibitions against that, in part to discourage conflicts if it's a supervisory type of role or making decisions. So you can, you can be on both sides of the some of these issues sometimes. One of the key things to keep in mind, at, at the end of the day, that I think is critical is what's the public perception? That when you're making some of these choices, particularly about ethics, what do you, what, what's going to be the buzz in whatever media you read? If it's the newspaper, radio, some kind of social media outlet, how's it going to be perceived by the public? Because at the end of the day, those are who you're serving, and they need to understand that we're doing the right thing too. So that's another test that factors in here. There's a lot of different values that we can explore at another time. Today, we're just going to talk about the, the first value on this list, professionalism, but we've been prior trainings, and we will in the future too, hit on some of these other values, like being trustworthy, putting the community first, acting with respect and fairness. We'll, we'll touch on those concepts too, as, as part of the training. But the first one I want to begin with is the professionalism part, and I want to do a little exercise here, and I'm going to pick on our board president here, Greg, but can you give me a brief summary about what you know about our, one of our newest directors, Director Grace, in terms of his background, his qualifications, his personality?
I only know what we've learned about him in the two and a half meetings that we've had. He seems like a straightforward individual with good thinking skills. He comes to the meetings prepared, and I'm proud to serve with him.
Okay, thank you. And Vice President Roberts, do you want to tell us what you know about Director Jensen?
I know that Director Jensen spent a full career with the California Highway Patrol. He just recently retired and that has enabled him to, you know, step up and, and run for the Board of Directors, which he accomplished. And I would say that he would be ethical and trustworthy, and I'm looking forward to getting more acquainted with him as the, as the time goes by.
Great, thanks, Steve.
Sure.
So the reason I put you on the spot, and I thank you both, Greg and Steve, for that, is one of the things that really is going to make this board strong is really knowing each other very well, that you're a collection of individuals, and yet you have to function as a team. And I think the more that you know and understand your fellow board members' background, their experiences, for example, Steve was obviously aware that Charles was a ZHP officer as a law enforcement background. John has stated that he has a planning background. So knowing all those things helps you all understand where they're coming from on issues, what their focuses may be. Obviously, you all have different styles, perspectives, and putting them all together, you can build on strengths and make a stronger board. So there, there was a little bit of method to the madness about, and I hope, and you know, maybe as part of the strategic planning session that Bill has prepared for us, everybody will get to know each other a, a little bit, because I think that really makes a difference in terms of how you govern, when you know each other in, in a more deeper way, I guess, not just every two weeks you show up and you have a, a meeting together, but you really understand the perspectives and, and draw on each other's strengths or backfill weaknesses too. In addition to knowing each other, obviously, you all need to understand your duties. Those come over time. I'm sure that John and Charles are kind of having their heads spin with all the reading materials we've given them regarding the district's codes and policies, but all that is critical because how we govern, you know, how you appear to the public in, in meetings and in the other forums is almost as, or perhaps even more important perhaps than a work product that comes out, or it's, this is equally as important. Hopefully, if you haven't done so, there'll be opportunities to understand our facilities better. Got a police station here. Hopefully, you haven't spent time as a member of the public in there, but certainly if you haven't been, there should be opportunities to go to the corpyar, to the wastewater treatment plant, to understand what those facilities are that you're voting on, that you're budgeting. That's a critical part of what being a professional board member includes. I think in his summary of Director Grace, it was mentioned that he comes prepared. That is critical, understanding items, reviewing our packages, asking questions of staff in advance. Part of that is to look for potential conflict of interest as well, not realizing at the time of the meeting that you may have a conflict. So early preparation really does pay off, and it's, it's very critical. Couple other points though about being professional. Good boards have good relationships with their staff too, and we certainly encourage as staff members, questions, and probably prefer them before board meetings, if possible, so that we're better prepared to respond to your questions, because there are obviously sometimes things that we don't know, can't answer on the fly, and we want to. So when we hear from you earlier about what's your concern, are we providing you the information that you need to make a decision, that's great, because as, as a staff member, I can tell you, we don't like to get blindsided at a meeting. So think in advance, work, cooperate. That'll make us all better. Don't forget, and I think you all, I have to say, do a really great job at this, providing good feedback to staff when you appreciate a report, or, you know, if you wanted more information, you're very courteous about doing it. So that shows, I think, the kind of professionalism in that, that just enhances the organization in an important way too, and it makes staff feel good too, I'm sure. So just a brief recap about this value, knowing each other, the team, knowing your duties, understanding the facilities and operations of the district, coming prepared and asking questions in advance, and finally, what we're doing right now. Keeping current with training, there'll be a lot of opportunities, hopefully in-person opportunities post-pandemic to get training. CSDA has a lot of good things, but there are also a lot of good online resources available for you as well. So don't hesitate to reach out to, to Bill or to Christie about different training opportunities that exist out there. Okay, any thoughts on that section, all that pretty straightforward stuff, but you know, again, being professional is, is part of being ethical in how you conduct business. So with that, then we'll transition into what I call the Transparency Laws, Brown Act, Public Records Act. Here's the kind of opening statement from the Brown Act that we as a board exist to conduct the people's business. I love that line. It's a great, great line, and the law is summarized here, that action should be taken openly and deliberations conducted openly. And to that end, the real, there are three kind of key points to the law, that meetings should be open to the public, and all persons have the right to attend. Just by way of historical background, obviously Ralph M. Brown Act was named after somebody. Ralph Brown was an Assembly Member from Modesto who promoted the earliest version of the law, and the law was in response to a series of articles that were in the San Francisco Chronicle that summarized how so many meetings throughout the state were being basically conducted in back rooms, the old spunk-filled room where decisions would be made, and then something would come out of it, but the public weren't, wasn't present in the room, which was the problem. So that's what the law was intended to address. It certainly makes things a little bit more difficult for us in terms of all the agendas and different rules and regulations, but it, it serves a significant and fundamental purpose about the openness. All of our board meetings obviously are subject to the Brown Act as our standing committees and potentially other committee meetings we may establish in the future. Understanding what a meeting is is critical, the understanding of Brown Act, and as you'll see down at the bottom, the key takeaways are, is there a majority of the body? So for this board, it's three. Are you getting together at the same time? Interestingly, location is not quite as critical, although that's stated in the act, but we'll talk about how you can now have meetings, particularly because of our virtual world, without being in the same location. And a lot of people think too that a meeting is, well, we're taking action. But the Brown Act says there are a number of things that can constitute a meeting. Hearing information, just discussing information, or even deliberating can constitute a meeting. Action is actually not required for there to be something that could potentially violate the Brown Act. So from time to time, I'm going to have a little game here. It's called The Choice Is Yours, where I'm going to put you on the spot and ask you some questions.
Don, real quick, it looks like Will Parks has his hand up. Do you want me to?
Yes, please.
I just have a question, Don, in regards to the Brown Act versus, versus closed sessions. How does that work?
So we're, we'll talk about that a little bit more, but the closed session is an exception to the Brown Act. That we have our open session, and that, that's really what the Brown Act requires, that business should be conducted in public view. But the law recognizes that, hey, there are some matters that require either confidentiality, for example, personnel matters, litigation. I certainly wouldn't want to be discussing strategy in a case with the opposing attorney on the Zoom call, taking notes. So there are a number of exceptions, but they're limited, as, as we'll discuss to particular topic areas.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, sure, and we'll. Yeah, sure. And we'll, we'll explore that more. So right now we're just delving into the beginning. So which, which of these following is a Brown Act or is this a Brown Act violation where three board members run into each other at a coffee shop and you start talking about the county's new COVID-19 restrictions? Does it violate the Brown Act? Yes. B, no. C, only if you discuss the Mulligan Room? Jumped ahead with that. Anybody want to venture a guess?
I say yes.
Got a yes?
I'm gonna say no unless we were talking about how COVID dealt with, we dealt with it within the CSD. So that, but I could say yes if we were going to talk about COVID as it, as it applies to the CSD office.
Okay, I say, I say yes because three board members constitute an, an official meeting. Because it's the majority of, of the board. And if I talk about county new COVID-19 restrictions, that and that involves the CSD. So therefore it is an official meeting and that's would be a violation of the Brown Act.
Okay.
I would, I would tend to agree with that just by virtue of the conversation, whatever conversation you may start having, it could segue into a board, a board action or board decision making. And I would agree with Steve if, if you know, if we're subject to grant money, for example, based on the county's response to COVID. That could easily transition into a, into a discussion that would be, would be a violation.
Okay. So all of you had great points. I think you are all correct. It, it really depends. I think Greg had a very good response and Steve, you were obviously intuiting in your mind, it depends on where the conversation goes. And this is probably likely to affect the CSD somehow. So if it's an issue within your jurisdiction, then it definitely, you know, you have your majority. You have something within what's called your subject matter. And then, and just to clarify too, John, remember it doesn't have to segue into action. If you just start discussing, you know, I don't really like the fact that the general manager keeps closing down the office every time there's an outbreak. We should.
Understood, Don. I guess what I would say is it may not be, you may not be approving a resolution, an action in that regard, but it, you could, you could be making a decision. I mean, you could collectively be making a, a decision that would, would translate into a, an action at a, at a regular board meeting.
Right.
Or perhaps to say you might be influencing someone else's decision. And also I would like to add that it brings up the appearance to the general public that three board members are meeting. They don't know what we're talking about. So the appearance is often.
Yeah, it may not technically be a violation, but it, it looks, it certainly would look like one.
Exactly. Great, great points. Yeah, particularly the perception point. So certainly I don't know if you've run into it yet, if you've gone, well, I'm not sure the Mulligan Room's even open now, but if three of you are hanging out, I'm sure some people would kind of start shaking their heads. Now, it doesn't mean that three of you can't hang out and talk about golf. That's certainly permitted, but it's a great point about just the public seeing you together and thinking, oh, I bet they're talking district business. So that's just one of the burdens of your life now as public officials. That people are going to look at you and hold you to a different standard. So great, good discussion. If we have, there are three types of meetings, our regular meetings, our special meetings. Fortunately, we haven't had to have an emergency meeting and I hope not, but they have, each have different rules, particularly with respect to posting agendas in the timing of those meetings as well. One of the things that if you haven't looked at your code lately, just this is a good segue into the point I made about, you know, knowing what are your duties? Well, here's, here's a great summary in our code about the board authority here and particularly the point of you can only take action at meetings collectively as a board. That otherwise you don't have the authority as individuals to take action. So good, good one to Don, can we, can we stay on this one for a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely.
Go back. Regarding item number three. It's my opinion or my experience that there have been instances where it's kind of an emergency thing that has happened and you are retroactively approving that an action that's been already taken place. There must be an exception someplace for that. There, there. Without emergency meeting. Right. Combination, I think of two things, Terry. That was Terry, right? Yeah. Yeah. Keep, keep in mind that much of your day-to-day business is authorized by the, and carried out by your general manager. And there's a lot of delegations to Bill. And I think probably what you're referring to are those instances where he has carried something out and then but just to make sure either because of timing or maybe a financial amount seeks board ratification for that as well.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to make sure it's clear that this is not, might be a 100% case.
Yeah, yeah. But the board can only act, you know, that way. So, you know, two of you could not say, hey, let's build this project.
Sure.
That, that's, I think the distinction here and just the, the reminder I wanted to point out that the board only acts collectively. What we need to be careful about with the Brown Act is not so much obviously our agendaist meetings, there, there's certain rules we'll, we'll talk about for those that we have to conduct our meetings in a proper way, but the issue with the Brown Act are really these, what I call informal meetings where there could be a series of communication or intermediaries that result in what's called the collective concurrence, where a majority is kind of moving towards certain action. So they can occur in a couple ways that you need to be careful about. One is the daisy chain approach where one member contacts another member and so on until you've reached your quorum of three. That's what's called a serial meeting. And then there's a variation of that called the hub and spoke, where there's an intermediary perhaps that talks to you, maybe, you know, a citizen goes around to each one of you and shares his or her discussion with other board members about something that they want to move forward. You need to be very careful about those things, discourage people from telling you what other board members may think to avoid this kind of situation. Our technology today makes it even easier to violate the Brown Act through email or other platforms because again, you don't have to be taking action if you're just discussing or deliberating on something that's considered potentially a Brown Act violation too. Okay, little check in for you, choice is yours. You're preparing for an upcoming meeting. You draft an email to the manager stating your intent about a particular item, but you request some more information. Should you copy the entire board so that they know what you're thinking? Hit reply all when the agency manager responds so that they all have the same information that you have. Should you only email the manager or should you do none of these? Don't even bother with that manager.
C.
C. Okay, C is correct. You don't want to copy the entire board because you're sharing your thoughts about something. Same with replying to all, that's the one you want to avoid. But you can certainly reach out and you have the right to have individual communications with the manager or staff. So C is the correct here. It said individual meetings are okay.
I think none of the above is also wrong because that leads to blindsiding.
Exactly. Or lacking information. So, you know, where you want to be careful, some people get so round, wound up in the Brown Act that they don't do anything. And you, I don't want you to go to that extreme either to feel, oh, I can't talk to anybody there. I can only show up at the meeting and ask my questions. And the point that Bill and I want to drive home and other staff people to, no, they're available to you for information outside. It's really just avoiding the discussions with your fellow board members about things outside of the meeting that we want to be careful about. So just, just be cautious with all this electronic stuff, the tweets, the emails, platforms, even if you engaged in next door and started talking about things and another board member got on too. You're developing not only a record, but you're moving, if a third board member engaged in the conversation, the chain moving towards a Brown Act violation. So just be very careful. Some basic rules about emails. Don't send to the whole body. Be careful about your replies to things, particularly about communicating positions. Again, not copying majority of the board and then even just if you're communicating with members of the public about things too. Just be very careful about what you send out. Emails can have a long shelf life.
A question on social media, Don?
Yes.
There have been instances, I guess I've been liable for doing this too, but sometimes somebody on, for example, next door says something that is just flat wrong, you know, it's, it's factually incorrect. I guess there's a potential for saying, well, that has to do with district business or something like that. But it's, it's factually incorrect. So can you not respond to somebody and say, well, you're full of it, you know, that's, that's wrong.
And is that what you've done, Terry?
I don't think I said it quite that way, but I was thinking it.
Right, the professionalism part, keep, keep, keep that in, in mind. But yeah, that, that's a tough one because while I appreciate that you're trying to set them straight with information. Again, it can lead to other discussion, you know, with, with other people about things. So it's a fine line. That's part of the reason why we hired Megan to have a staff person do some of that.
And she has her hand up.
Okay.
Just a, a quick question when it comes to social media and the Brown Act. What if Terry makes a comment and John and Charles read it? Even if they're not commenting on it, does that constitute a quorum?
Well, it, it starts to move in that direction. That's part of it, Megan. That's, that's why that's kind of a dangerous thing to do because then potentially they're sharing information, you know, about things. Now, that, that's not so much, I would put that on the scale, things pretty down at the bottom because if somebody said, oh, they've never fixed the drainage at the gates. And Terry responds, no, we completed that project last month. That's just a piece of factual information and that's done, that's not coming before the board. So that kind of communication is not a problem. But it could be a problem about future actions coming up about things. So that, that's where you want to be careful.
So the line would be crossed when they begin expressing opinion rather than fact?
Opinion or views about upcoming issues is where you want to be careful about.
Okay, thank you.
So just again responding, hey, we're going to talk about the gate project at the next board meeting. Great. Piece, piece of factual information, not, not a problem. But hey, yeah, I know the gate's a problem and I've been pushing the public works guide is to get it done. Then you're kind of moving into, you know, action, discussion. That's where we want to be careful. And you know what, what's interesting, well, probably the district attorney wouldn't know if two other board members read your post there. These things do get discovered particularly through emails and this, this headline up here where a council person in San Jose lined up votes on a sort of a pet project, wanted to name a, a certain area of the Saigon Business District and went around canvassing votes before the board meeting. It got out. I'm not quite sure how it got out, but they do. And then that looks really bad because this decision was made outside of the public forum. So this is what we want to avoid and that's why keeping off social media is probably the best thing. Differ it to Megan, to Christie, to Bill, to, you know, respond to those things. Anymore thoughts?
Just a, you're just a point. We're, we're, we're in a unique situation. We are board members, you govern by the Brown Act, but in, in Bar Valley, we have social media that also involves other associations like BBSA, which each of us is a dues paying member. So you know, I've taken the position personally that I don't, I don't comment on any social media. Because I, you know, you run the risk of, of, you know, making some mistakes and, and then you're, you know, it's out there forever. But since, you know, what about board members discussing issues having to do with BBSA? Because they're a dues paying member too, and do they have the right to do that?
Yes, my response Steve is going to be, it depends. Obviously you don't lose all your rights as a citizen, but there is this interesting relationship between the CSD and the BBSA, right? Because there are tenants. So some of the things that they may be doing are also district issues. Other things that they may be doing are not, I guess, Steve. So it really depends on you know, what the particular action may be and how that may interrelate, you know, to the district. So if something purely like, oh, there's too much chlorine in the pool. That's the right you have as a resident there to comment on things. That's not something we really control as a board. That issue wouldn't come before the board really, but then some of the issues related to facilities could because they're part of our lease. So it, it's probably a fine line. Those are challenging things. So I, I have to have specifics.
Yeah, okay. Well, I just take the, I take the position not to participate in, in talking on social media, obviously you read it and you say, oh boy, whatever. But anyway, I mean, you know, just for the protection of, of ourselves, I personally do not participate at all. So, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's obviously the safest route, Steve, but I, I don't want to come off as saying you cannot, you know, speak your mind about things that are purely BBSA matters that, that don't really impact your position. But there could be a lot of overlap.
Okay, yeah. Alright, thanks.
Yeah, safe is always good. Just to finish up with this slide, if we were to inadvertently violate the Brown Act, before somebody can go off to court, the Brown Act actually requires a somebody who's complaining to ask, request a cure, say, hey, there was a violation here. You took some action, it wasn't on the agenda, you need to fix it. Most agencies should because if, if there is a violation or even if it's a close call, why not? Although it's interesting, I've seen a lot of agencies that just refuse to do it. They go to court, then they end up spending lots of money. You know, for what? When you can fix it? Just own up or fix it. So, but nobody can just run into court, which is kind of nice here. But if you did lose, you're going to not only, you know, pay for defending the action, you're going to pay for the other side's costs and attorney's fees that can add up. And Brown Act violations can also be criminal too. Oh, I have to say, I almost can't think of any criminal prosecution of the Brown Act. It's generally handled civilly, but. of the Brown Act. It's generally handled civilly, but it is something out there. Okay. We have an agenda description. Item thirteen mailbox initiative measure recommendation, provide direction to staff. May the board A adopt a resolution, call for a special tax assessment election. B do A and adopt the ballot arguments at the meeting. C do A and B and accept a gift from a locking mailbox vendor to pay for the election. E direct staff to bring back items A to C.
Wow, interesting.
I'll say A only.
I think A is the appropriate action.
I'm gonna go with none of the above because we're just supposed to provide direction to them. And then they would come back to us with a revolution resolution to adopt.
There is no none of the above. There's a choice there that Don is giving us. I think A is probably the others are too open ended, I think.
Right.
Okay, so let's assume you remember the public and you read in the newspaper the next day, board adopts resolution calling for special election on the mailbox. Do you do you think this agenda description described that action?
The only thing that describes the actions D, I guess.
Yeah, actually, none of them do. So well, D is really kind of correct. These are things you'd have to bring back to do kind of a non-action, future action, because the agenda description really doesn't tell the public what's going to happen. If we're adopting a resolution, the description should say adopting resolution and what it's doing. You know, calling for special election.
It's always fun to argue with a an attorney. Number D says direct staff to brings item A through C. And I don't think we're going to direct staff to bring back gifts from locking mailbox vendors. So you can't do A through C. So that makes D wrong.
Well, you could, you're thinking too hard on that, but yes.
Oh.
You could bring it back for consideration and hopefully deny it.
Yeah.
I I tell you, this actually happened. Apple Valley had something almost identical to this. It was about a big project. They took actions A, B, and C at their meeting with a kind of direct staff discussion. So they called for suspension, adopted arguments, and they even said, hey, great, we'll have the big box retailer pay for all this. Got sued. The reason they got sued is because why? They refused to cure the violation. So they had a chance to go back. Oh, why don't we put this on the agenda? Didn't do it. Spent a lot of money, lost the case, and then they had to go back and do it. So point here is really that the test about our agenda descriptions. And we we try hard at the staff level to, you know, provide sufficient information, but the test is what's called substantial compliance. Does it give the public more than just a clue? So the reason in this other one that that adopting the resolution, I feel what was not appropriate is because directing staff to do something in the future doesn't give you a clue that you're actually going to adopt. You know, a resolution that that said, you know, have a special election. So
Yeah, but if you were, you know, if the if A adopt a resolution, it would need to be on the agenda and and advertised. So it's kind of tricky here because we wouldn't act on something that wasn't on the agenda. We follow agendas. And that far as previous notice and all those kinds of things in conformance with the Brown Act. So that's kind of a tricky one, Don.
That's that's my job, Steve.
I know.
I like D better if it says direct staff to bring back items A and B, not A through C because of the gift.
Right.
That's that's interesting you do, Greg. This is part, yeah, we we take this. I want to see how you respond to these things.
Yeah.
I like the discussion. I'm happy to have the discussion.
Yeah, that's good. All good. Okay. Another test here, during public comments on a non-agendized item, the board may have a five minute conversation with a member of the public. Accept a request from Eagle Scout to install rustic wood carved street signs. Request donations for your political campaign or none of the above.
None of the above.
Saying heads none.
Yeah, I would say none of the above.
Our board president is weighing his options.
What you may do versus what you should do.
Exactly. This is America, not America should. So you shouldn't have the five minute conversation, but I guess we could do that. We're not going to under my presidency, that's for sure. We did have a case where an Eagle Scout came in. They needed our permission to do a, there's a bike set of bike tools outside the restroom at Cub Lake. And his Eagle Scout would have expired had we pushed this to the following meeting. And so we just kind of did a straw poll. I don't think we broke any rules. And if we did, what would we do? Maya Copa, we could put it on an agenda to prove it after the fact and fix it. That's all I got.
Well, this should be, you know, on non-agenda items. It's the public gets up and and speaks on whatever they wanted to, and that that requires no comment from the board or staff. They get up and speak. And we say, thank you. And they sit back down and we move on. So that's why none of above is the appropriate answer.
That that is the most appropriate here that here's here's the rules. Now, when you have a non-agenda item, the statute says briefly respond. So you really want to be careful. And as Greg said, that's not going to be his MO, because that's not what the statute says. Yeah, those are non-agendized items. If something's worthy of five minute conversation, we should agendize it and discuss it. You can ask questions, make announcements, make brief reports, et cetera, et cetera. And to Greg's point, I think you're absolutely right. And I had that in the back of my mind when I put in the Boy Scout. Well, I remembered something about Boy Scouts coming up and that was the situation, yeah, where there are exceptions where you could add things to agendas too. And I think the board felt in that situation, that's not a significant thing where the public would be deprived of something. It was an Eagle Scout trying to do a little project there. But ideally, if there were time permitting, we would send him back to come back for another agendized item. So you're right. Sometimes you have to find what what is fair to in some of these things. I don't think the board properly felt. I didn't say anything at the time that it was going to get us some trouble for allowing the Boy Scout to do a project.
Yeah, well, just, you know, in the public comments for our meeting coming up in in just an hour and a half, it says, members of the public may address the board on matters not listed on the agenda. The board cannot take action on any item that is not on the agenda. The board or staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed, or may ask questions for clarification. These items may also be referred to staff or scheduled on a future agenda. There will be a separate opportunity for public comment for each item on the agenda. So that's that spells out the game work.
The rules are right there. That's all we need to point to. Yeah. Good. Just so briefly, just about public participation at the meeting, what's required under the Brown Act is accessibility, including ADA compliance, access to the agendas when they're distributed to the majority of the board, including the related documents. It's nice being able to post those now. They're they're up there well in advance under our current processes, which are great. We have to allow people to speak on items before, during consideration. And people do have the right to record a meeting, but since we're doing it now ourselves, that's never been an issue. Just a couple of things, though, that we don't want to happen. Obviously, at meetings, you can get critics. The city of Inglewood had a critic. He was posting videos from snippets of the meeting, claiming they were abusing their power. And the city sued him for alleged copyright violation of public meeting records. The court found the city's action meritless and ordered the city to pay the residents' legal fees of over $100,000. Got to have a thick skin in this business. Squelching public speech is not a good way to go. Just this week, came across this article was interesting. The ACLU had sued Orange County because they had an interesting rule on the books that members of the public could not ask questions of members of the board without obtaining permission of the chair. Now, it's common practice to direct comments to the board, but this kind of rule on no, no speaking with permission, but they also had some practice too that you couldn't like even criticize an individual board member or something. And they lost in the trial court day that the county on this had to pay, you know, they agreed to pay the ACLU's money and took this out. But again, this is an example of an agency going too far in limiting public participation and getting called for it. All right, closed sessions. An exception. Obviously, they're not open to the public. So we have limited topics that we can address in closed session. Typically, the ones that we do something that's either existing or potential for litigation, where you're getting advice from our office. If we're doing real estate negotiations to protect us from having to overpay if people knew what we were willing to pay for something. And personnel matters because there's a privacy interest of the personnel there. There are some exceptions where employee can actually ask themselves for a a matter to be heard publicly, but that's that's very rare.
Excuse me, Chief Melanson had his hand up. It might have been the previous. Did he did he say something or ask something, chief?
Yeah, if I could just take a second, if the board members would let me learn something here. Don, can you talk about examples of what we commonly see on our agendas under the agenda item disclosures by board members? Maybe just throw out a few examples of what is expected or what what is what is that intended to bring out?
That that's a great question. It's been on the agenda for a while, Tim, but the purpose of that, that's going to get into our section a little bit later about potential conflicts of interest or just about disclosures. It really goes to Tim if we've had significant discussions with people about an item on the agenda that they should share where they've gotten information about something. So if we, let me give you an example. Remember when we had disputes with people who had to take their fence out or putting fence encroachments? And we were make, we agendized these because they appealed it. Let's say a board member had significant conversations with either the person who put the fence in our right of way, or maybe even a neighbor complaining they don't want the fence there. Those are the kind of things that need to be discussed because they don't appear in the agenda reports. And so some, one particular member of the board has more information about things than others do. So it's really just a disclosure requirement.
All right, thank you, Don.
Yeah, hope that helps. And I think almost uniformly, most people haven't in things because frankly, most of our agendas aren't on those kind of individualized things anyhow.
Yeah.
But they're not, we we don't, unlike a city council or planning commission, have those kind of individual personal disputes that were kind of acting almost like a judge and jury. And we've rarely had that. But that that is the purpose. So thanks. Thanks for raising that. Thank you.
They raise a point about particularly things like encroachments into easements. What I'm thinking of is, let's let's say this is a real instance of a board member who thought that the idea of enforcing the district's right to maintain its easements under the law was a waste of at least that board member's time. This is only a caution that I think we have an obligation as board members to respect. You know, we're representing the board, you know, we have allegiance to the state of California. We can't just say, well, you know, I I don't like the idea that somebody put his his fence into the easement and therefore we're going to tell him to take it out. This happened.
That's a very good point, Terry. A little bit different from this point, but you know, it goes to, I think, the board's duties that there are just things that we have to do from time to time as a board. Obviously, people don't want to. There there's policy sides to things. There's political sides, the sometimes enforcements. There are things that we potentially could enforce under our code, but you know, they're costly to do too. So those are policy decisions for the board. Not not everything is mandated, but yes, to disparage a rule that that raises questions and, you know, I would think concerns in the public's view, or if somebody doesn't like the rule, then the process is to change it too. Which the board has done too on on policies. You know, we're not set in stone, but there's a process for doing it. Rather than disparage, I would agree is not the best approach.
Director Jensen, good afternoon. What's on your mind?
Good afternoon. Yeah, just a couple of things about closed sessions. So my first thing is that at some point, a closed session item is resolved. And then it's no longer a confidential matter. So at what point are those matters revealed?
Well, if we take a litigation case, for example, Charles, that's probably the cleanest. If a case settles or gets dismissed. You know, it it goes away. So we usually don't talk about it anymore. Certain records could potentially then become public. If there is a dispute that resulted in a settlement, let's say. Then sometimes there's an obligation to disclose the action if you're settling something and you know it's final. But oftentimes it doesn't happen because you don't know quite yet. You authorize a settlement, but you don't know the other side's final position on things. But let's say we did. Somebody hands us a document and says, we need to settle this case for $10,000. And they've signed it. And if we approve that in our closed session, Charles, then at the end of the closed session, we have an obligation to report that action because that's reportable. So then then we would do it. A lot of closed session things just kind of have their own life though, Charles. It depends on whether it's litigation or maybe it's an exposure to litigation and it goes away.
But then some of these litigation matters are already public record when they're being discussed. I mean, how how do we keep closed if it's already a public record of that action?
So if if there's a public record of the action, for example, the we have publicly disclosed the Willdan lawsuit, right? But I am hopeful in the future there will be closed sessions on that because I'm going to need advice, particularly if we're going to discuss settlements. But there there could be three or four meetings where we talk about settlements. We propose something, we get something back. Those aren't final yet, Charles. So until we get that final document, that was kind of the example I gave you about the $10,000 clean settlement. When that becomes final, then that potentially could be disclosed and certainly the settlement agreement would become a public record. Okay, at the end. Is that helpful?
Yeah, I mean, it, it seems like there's a fine line between. I, I understand the need for not disclosing strategy and things like that, but the, the presence of things and, and the cost of said legal actions should be in the public record and, and there shouldn't be any reason that, you know, we're not putting that forward.
Well, again, when something's finalized, then, then it can be. But there are a lot of concerns, obviously during litigation about things, even, even cost of litigation though have sensitivity too. Because that reveals to the other side how much you're spending on things. So those are some fine lines about things. Probably we can explore more, but yeah, typically in the litigation side that that's generally going to stay confidential until litigation is resolved. In real estate, that's a little bit cleaner example, we could be discussing price of a property. Once we're agreed on it, then in an open session, Charles, we would approve the purchase agreement. Because we don't, you know, do that because then, once we know what the terms are, we're protected that we're not going to get exploited. Then obviously we want the public to know, yeah, we're going to buy that piece of property. It's going to cost us a hundred thousand dollars and everybody gets to chime in on that decision. So that's, that's where the protection lies in those things. With litigation, most settlements come first and then there's a disclosure about it. So you know, they're rarely kind of vetted for public review because of the sensitivities of negotiations.
Well, you, you bring up the Willdan suit. I mean, it's a perfect, perfect example. I mean, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, somewhere around a half million dollars to, to make this happen. And I think that's something that the public deserves to know. How much is this going to cost?
Well, that's where we have to be sensitive and actually that information is confidential, Charles, and should not be disclosed. Okay, for, for the reasons I just said. So we, we need to have more conversation. Let's, let's probably take that offline about things, but I, I hear what you're saying, but there, there are a lot of considerations that go into some of this that it's just, just the reason why the closed sessions, you know, exist too, so that we're not put in a position that's less advantageous than the private sector where they don't have to disclose anything. Okay. But good, all, all, all good questions, all, you know, things that we struggle with and try to find the balance. So do, do keep in mind though, that the information that we do discuss in closed sessions are confidential. Unless the board has taken some action that has to be reported or gives specific direction that authorizes the release of that information. And it's a potential criminal violation to disclose confidential information too. I didn't put that in there, but that, that's important for everybody to keep in mind. It's a very important matter for us. Okay, transition, we've, we've talked significantly about open meetings. I think that's very important. Good, a lot of good discussion, like the questions, this is great. We're going to touch on a little bit more briefly here, public records. Just so you're aware of it, a lot of this is done administratively. This is Christie's favorite topic, I'm sure, because she has the burden of responding to a lot of these things with, with some input from our office. But access to public records is a, not only in the government code, but it's in the constitution. Public records are really broadly defined. It's not just a piece of paper anymore. It's any document that relates to the public's business in whatever form it may exist in. So it can now be emails, it can be PDF files, it could be a voice message, it could be video. They're all considered public records if they meet the first two categories. They're about the public's business and their own used or retained by us. The general rule is that all those public records should be disclosed unless there's a specific reason not to do so. There are lots of exemptions though, as you can imagine, because there's a lot of private or privileged information though that we have. So it's not quite, everything's open. But I, I like this description from a court, it's like islands of privacy in a big sea of disclosure. So much more disclosure than privacy, but there are a lot of protections. It's always very interesting how the law evolves here. This case is a little bit older, but it involves GIS files. The county, it was Orange County. Didn't want to disclose them in part because they pay a lot of money to get this information. But the court said, you know, what public agencies do for their businesses is paid by the people. People should have access to this information. So even though we will pay a lot of money to have GIS files prepared. A lot of organizations, including realtors and other companies do data mining. And they ask us for our stuff, but because it's paid for with tax dollars, they, they do have a right to do it. Unless there's a particular exemption to it, or oftentimes the manner which we keep the files doesn't always mesh with what they do. And if they want it in a particular format, people have to pay to have the records produced in particular format if that's required. Okay, a little choice of yours. Which is a public record subject to disclosure. A, message about a Lakers game sent from your Bear Valley account. B, a message about a board agenda item sent from your email account, like a Gmail account. C, the text of a grocery list sent from your district phone. Or D, all of the above.
All of the above.
Yep, all of the above.
D.
Okay, most people going with D. Actually, the correct answer here is really just B. Because Lakers game and the grocery list aren't really anything to do with the public's business.
Sent on a public or on an agency device.
Yeah, on an agency device. So you need to be careful about that, but the question. The issue though under the rule is information containing information relating to the public's business. Point two here. So things like grocery lists, chat about Lakers games, aren't necessarily public records.
But it's not prepared, owned or used, and we prepared it using district property, right? Okay, so that means Hillary Clinton can purge thousands of emails before she turns her hard drive over to the public?
Not if they're talking about her work as Secretary of State.
Right, but if it was a grocery list, then it could be purged.
Yes, because not really a public record.
So Don, is there a distinction? I mean, if, for whatever reason, say a member of the public knows that I sent a message about the Lakers game or even my grocery list. Is it still not subject to disclosure if it's, if it's known?
Yeah, even, even if it's known, John, the point is it, it, it's not something related to the public's business.
I guess I, I'm not asking the question right. If, if under the Freedom of Information Act, they call out that specific item, is it still not, I, I think I heard your answer, but.
Yeah, yeah, still it wouldn't really change my answer.
Okay.
Point being, you probably shouldn't be using devices for those things, but if, if you did, they wouldn't necessarily be things that had to be turned over to the public. Okay, because it doesn't pertain to, to the people's business. That's, that the public has an absolute right to the people's business. But sometimes another way to think of it, because again, being, being tricky is Director Roberts said here. But imagine yourself in a cubicle at, at the district's office. You have a lot of papers around you. You're doing people's business there. But you have a little sticky note with the grocery list tonight. Okay, that, that's kind of the same thing. Somebody said, give me all, you know, the files that you're working on. You would not need to give them that little sticky of the grocery list. Because that's just a personal thing that's kind of mixed up with other things. Yeah.
Does that make sense?
But the real point I wanted to make though about those things and, you know, you guys were obviously on, on to me there was that a few years ago, the Supreme Court ruled that if you have information, again, here's the, the key carve out related to the public's business. Doesn't matter what device it's on, it's potentially a public record. So if it's on your private phone, personal device or account, those things are potentially disposable. If it's related to the public business, if it's the grocery list, if it's the Lakers chit chat. Okay, and probably another time, we should probably do a different session just about getting you familiar with our retention schedules. But we do have policies as to how long we maintain certain records as required by law. And then you have some discretion too in terms of what you need to retain as well. Hey, let's go into a meeting procedures. Kind of a, it, it's really kind of a subcategory I would put under the Brown Act about how we conduct the people's business. Procedures are important to ensure that everybody's point of view is considered, whether people are in the majority, minority of things. It's important each of you, hopefully at some point will have the the, the pleasure of sitting in the hot seat, the president's chair and running the meetings. And it really falls to that individual to apply rules of conduct, to, to know what to do, to obviously consult with myself, the general manager on issues. I think the last couple of points are good to keep in mind too, that the chair should try to play a less active role in debate. Allow others to kind of get their point in, not speak first, but sorry, speak towards the end. And it's also, you know, best practice too, but not absolutely required to allow others to make the motions too for items. That these all go to keeping everybody involved in the meeting. I think I'll skip over this because I think you know that pretty well already. Just some rules of decorum though to keep in mind. About one person speaking at a time, the chair does have some rights to cut off discussion if things become too personal. Take too long or become potentially too crude or obscene. Fortunately, that has not happened. We have the right to limit the time for speakers. Are often, as you know, when we have items that we recognize may take a while because the public interest will invoke our three minute rule. Other times we're a lot more informal and I think that's fine, given the nature of our agency. Trying to avoid extended debate with the public. Some members of the public do like to keep going back and forth with things. It's better to let them simply have their comments and then move on. Just a quick note about crowd control. Fortunately, our meetings haven't looked like this for some time. So there's, there's kind of three levels of control here. I think the one that we most frequently deal with is relevance, keeping members of the public kind of on topic. Not rambling or repeating themselves. I think there's some good techniques that you as board members can use to get people to summarize or to, you know, acknowledge that, yeah, we, we, we get your point. Do you have anything more to add? If people get totally impolite, we can rule them out of order. And then in the rare case, if somebody is so disruptive of our meetings, we can have them removed. We have not had to face that issue, which is a good thing, but it is an option in our tool bag if somebody was particularly disruptive. But they actually have to create a, some kind of physical interruption of the activities.
It's one advantage to a meeting online is the disruption is almost impossible with Christie in control of who gets to have access to the microphone. So that, that's one advantage of remote meetings.
It is. And, you know, interestingly, there's a bill pending. I think, yeah, a lot of agencies, they found out that COVID aside, having Zoom meetings, people in the public actually like it because they don't have to go. Bear Valley is a little bit different because you're smaller, but if you lived on top of the hill, you still got to schlep down to the district offices, but they're finding pretty good participation through Zoom and so the legislatures coming up with some rules. I don't think it's a mandate, but certainly encouraging public agencies to post-COVID to maintain this kind of video option so people can participate. So once we see that, it'll be interesting. There may be some challenges, how to do the dual meeting. Too, that's why I don't think it'll be a mandate because that would impose certain costs on us to have the equipment to do it. And it's not totally, it's not particularly easy, I think, to have a live meeting and the, the Zoom meeting going on, but it's certainly doable and we'll probably be considering that at some point in the future. Okay, next topic, the, the last two topics we have tonight are the, a lot of rules about disclosures, fair processes. The first one is about personal financial interests and fair processes. There's two sources for our, what we call the conflict of interest laws. One's called the Political Reform Act and then, which is most of them along with the regulations of the FPPC. And then there's a law called Government Code Section, we call it Section 1090, that deals with contractual conflicts of interest. The overriding purpose of these laws is that officials should owe a duty of loyalty to the public and that their personal financial interests shouldn't enter into the decision-making process. If they do, the rule is that you need to abstain from participation. Or in some cases, like in the contractual one, the agency can't even enter into a conflict if you're on the other side somehow. We begin with the disclosure process of the Form 700s. I think you've all been through that at least once now, or it's coming up for our new board members. These are to alert the public as to what your potential conflicts may be, but also keep, you know, you thinking about those too as items come up. It's important to get these in timely by April 1. And one of the highest numbers of fines that the FPPC doles out are people who are slow getting in their Form 700s. There's lots of reported cases of people being too slow to file. So make sure you get yours in on time. So participation rules, the rules on disqualification are as follows. You cannot make, participate, or even influence. So this goes all the way back to even having discussions about things. Any decision where you may have a foreseeable material financial effect. And we'll discuss what is foreseeable and what is a material financial. The best time to discuss a potential conflict with me would be at the meeting. It's convenient and it'll save you money afterwards. So I will know all the facts as early as possible or never, because as I said, I don't represent you. So don't tell me anything. Okay, C is good. Think, think early because as I said, these things can be complicated sometimes. And the sooner the better, because if you just ask me at a meeting, I may not have all the facts. And so I'll probably tell you, better not participate. So that's part of what this whole training is to help you, you know, keep an eye of these conflicts and talk, talk early on. So going to hit on their, their four or five here that you need to keep in mind that could result in a disqualifying conflict. One is if the decision involves a source of income to you. So if it was your employer, there was an issue, or even maybe somebody in the community. Though let, let's say you do work within the community. You know, if we had one of our encroachment hearings and you're a carpenter and you just did a $5,000 job at some, that person's house, there would be a source of income for you and potentially disqualify you in, in a manner involving that particular source or your spouse or domestic partner. So here's an example of a district person who voted for a contract that benefited a company that he worked. Was a client of his company. So source of income. And he got a $2,000 fine. Other potential sources can be you, a business in which you're an officer or employee, or even a business in which you have an investment. And $2,000 more isn't much of an investment. So the threshold's pretty low. And here's a case, and this applies to staff too. This, these are not just, and while I've been focusing a lot on the directors on, on these particular issues, staff should really perk up because you may have some kind of business interest that we don't know about. And if your work with the district somehow impacts private work that you may do outside, that can be a problem. Like this assistant city manager ran into because he had an investment in a franchise, one of those Orange Julius franchises. And at the same time, he was working as an employee of the city on some planning matters related to where his company was. This can also happen too, if the district's doing business with, again, a company. You may not be approving a contract, but if the district has a purchase order and paying some bills for company that you're dealing with. That's a disqualifying conflict. Okay, interest in real property are potential ground for conflicts of interest. Not a conflict because California has the homestead exemption. Not a problem if there's a 300 foot separation or always a conflict. If it's located, if your property is within our jurisdiction.
I'll go with A and B. I don't know if it's called the homestead exemption, but I know our primary residence is not, is not part of it.
Okay, correct answer here really is A, that real estate matters can be a conflict, including your personal home. The rule is that any property that you have an interest in, 2,000 more, including even if you were a tenant, have a lease interest. There is some bright line test if you're less than, excuse me, within zero to about 500 feet is a pretty bright line test that you'd need to be careful about something because it's too close and could affect the value of your house. After 500 feet, the, it becomes potentially less problematic, but not always. It just depends on the particular type of project that we're doing. Now, again, we don't have a huge land use component is what we do. You typically will find these in cities where they're approving some project that may, you know, impact property. But let's say we needed to relocate our wastewater treatment plant. And that proposed location was 200 feet from your house. I think that's going to have some impact on your home investment. And you would be disqualified as a board member from participating in that discussion because of potential impact.
Another good example would be a cell phone tower on or near board members property.
Board members or even general managers.
Exactly.
Don, I'm going to take a quick bathroom break. Sorry.
We won't deduct it from your score.
Okay, good.
Good, no, good, good examples, great. And, you know, here's an example where somebody voted to approve a grant to extend the sewer and water line. Potentially a good thing for the community, but the problem was this person owned real property that could suddenly be developed because of that extension and that really increased his benefit. So that was something the person should not have participated in. That's interesting. Steve took a timely break here because this recently came up for him. There are a couple of exemptions to the personal, these financial conflicts. One's called the public generally exception, the other's called legally required participation. In the first case, if we're making decisions that have a broad range of impacts, either it involves 25% of all businesses, which we don't have a whole lot of businesses. But if it impacted a large area of real property or of our population, or there are particular example, exceptions to the water and sewer rate decisions. And that's the one you recall where people were complaining that Director Roberts had a potential conflict of interest on the sewer rate. Because he was only, the only board member who actually lived in the area served by the sewer. While I understood the concern, because it does seem somewhat apparent to the public that, well, that's impacting him, not the others, but because it's a rate matter, there's a specific exemption for rates. Because all rate making generally applies to everybody who's subject to the rates. It's just, we have an unusual situation with a smaller sewer area. But if none of you could vote on the water rates, which has a direct impact on your bottom line, we could never approve the water rates. So that's why rate making is exempted from these kinds of conflicts. And then there's another one. We have not had this situation thankfully, but if three of you were to all have a conflict in something. Let's say you all lived within 500 feet of this new sewer plant that we were putting in. We could not take action on it if three of you were disqualified. So in this kind of situation, you need to have a quorum. And what you often do will be to draw straws between the people who had the conflict. So there can be a quorum and to break a tie vote. Or at least to have any kind of vote too. So very rare, but something that can come up. Another fairly rare one is you can have conflicts of interest created by future employment. So if the district's dealing with some company and you're potentially interviewing with that company, that's a prospective employer, so you can't be involved in district business. I was working with another agency that works with the federal government and we're trying to recruit a CFO. That person had to recuse himself from federal business because he was talking to us as a potential employee. So that, that's the same kind of rule the federal government has that we also have too about disqualifying from, even if you're just in the interview process with people. And then there's a rule about going to the other side if you leave the public sector. So if any of our staff were to leave, they could not come back and represent people in front of the district for one year after leaving office. So there's prohibitions on both ways. And here's an example of a director who voted on a matter involving a company that he was discussing employment with. $4,000 fine. So hopefully he got the job. A lot of these conflicts, well, all the ones that we've touched on so far are all regulatory ones, are all in statutes. But there is, there are also conflicts of interest that come through just being biased against people. This, this is what's been developed, what we call the common law through court cases where you have a situation, it's not always a financial interest that's regulated, but you're just so biased that you're not able to be impartial in something.
Excuse me, Joe, we have a hand up with a water supervisor.
Yep.
It's just more of a, because I'm curious about the fines or potential fines. Would that go to the council member or board member or to the, or to the agency?
These are all on you guys. So every one of these violations comes out of your pocket. Yeah, they're, they're not agency liabilities in any way. So all, all fines would be liable for the individual. And then the, the sting of the agency is we look bad. Yeah, in this situation, you know, when the public reads that headline, oh, yeah, that's why he proved that. He was trying to get a job with them. So we, we all lose through those kind of actions, but it's the individual has to pay. So good, good question.
Thank you.
So the, the, the rule on biases, they're, they're kind of two, two strains here. One, for our board members to keep in mind, it's fine to make statements about things as a candidate. Because people kind of want to know your position on things. So there's an interesting carve out that this was a California Supreme Court case from a number of years ago saying, hey, look, the public needs to know before they elect you what your views are on matters. So we don't want you to be banned from, you know, not saying anything during a campaign. I mean, even though candidates don't often like to answer questions. But then there's another situation in the second case, the Nasha case, where somebody was a planning commissioner. And he was going to hear, the planning commission was going to consider a small subdivision. And this guy wrote an article in the newspaper bashing the subdivision, saying, oh, this is a terrible project. It's awful, shouldn't happen. Well, the applicant hadn't even come before the planning commission. So naturally they have the hearing. This guy votes against the project. I think it got defeated, but they sued and the court said, hey, this person had already made up his mind. He had published this article before the hearing. So the, the, the rule of thumb going back is that you need to, the second point here about you need to exercise power with disinterest. Certainly you're interested, but you don't want to come out before actions and basically telegraph your positions on things. A somewhat humorous, but kind of sad example of bias is where the mayor in San Marino had a neighbor who opposed a dog park that he was promoting. So the guy walked, the mayor walked by this guy's house and threw his poop in the guy's lawn. He got picked up on video surveillance at the guy's house. It got posted. It embarrassed the mayor so much, he had to step down. But it's that kind of example of bias that you want to try to avoid in matters. So if you have any of these conflicts of interest, you're disqualified. And the rule is at a meeting where you're disqualified, you have to identify the interest. So you can't just say, I've got a disqualification, I'm out of here. You need to say the applicant is my employer or a source of income. You need to be specific about what the particular interest is. You need to step down and leave the room unless it's a consent calendar item. And obviously you can't participate in the discussion. There are rare examples. The exception here is where something may affect your personal economic interest. So I'll use my new sewer plant example. If the district were to build a sewer plant 300 feet from Steve's house, he couldn't participate as a board member, but he could sure sit in the office and go to you guys, hey, don't build this plant next to my house. So you don't lose all your rights by becoming a board member. But it's pretty rare where you can step down in, in that manner and speak on a personal matter affecting you. But usually you're totally disqualified and need to get out of the way. Again, we don't have a lot of these because of the nature of the business we do, which is nice. But it's, it's just good to go through these rules here. Another test for you, when is it legal to enter into a contract with your agency? You can do it if you use a third party intermediary, like a real estate broker. If you disclose your interest in advance and don't vote, like we've been discussing. If it's only a small amount of money, not a problem. Or potentially you're the best service provider for something. So you should be able to contract with the district because that's good for the public, right?
Well, B, you have to disclose everything upfront.
Disclosure is critical, but can you do this? Okay, this is a different law. This is what's called Section 1090 that we're going to get into. And the answer here is it's almost never legal to enter into a contract with your agency. Okay?
Interesting.
Section 1090 and it prohibits self-dealing. So even in this scenario where, let's say the district needs some pest control services and that's your business and you are the best in Kern County, we can't contract with you. Because of the potential favoritism. It's just a hard line rule with contracts. You can't do it, even if you disclose it, you can't abstain away the interest. It's, it's just prohibited from the get-go. Okay, there's no out for extensions, straight up prohibited. And contracts are liberally construed. It doesn't always have to be, you know, the 10-page legal document. It could be a purchase order. Any kind of financial arrangement directly between you and the district. There's two exceptions. One, if there was an existing contract before you assumed office. So in my pest control situation, if the district had contracted with your company for, you know, monthly service calls at a fixed price, you could keep doing that. But if you need to change the contract in any way, if additional work gets added, that would be prohibited. And you can make the choice too to terminate your interest. So you could sell your pest control company. Then you could vote on the pest control contract, but you can't both own the pest control company and be a board member and contract with your company. They're very hard bright line rule here. And there are different permutations too. Here's a situation where a council member voted to give a housing loan to the police chief. And then he was also the real estate broker in, in the transaction. So he kind of had a interest in this transaction. Doesn't look good. Okay, what's interesting about these 1090 violations, if it did happen and it was discovered, your contract would be voided. And even if you had done the work, let's say, going And even if you had done the work, let's say, going back to my pest control company. Let's say you did six months of work for the district. And then we discovered that, oh, wait a minute, that's Director X's company. We can't have this contract. We don't have to pay you anything. You're totally, yeah, at a loss there. Um, because the law just looks harshly at that kind of self-dealing. Uh, there are a couple of things called remotes and non-interests. Uh, where you can potentially participate in things where you may have an interest, like if you're a landlord or a tenant. Um, or uh perhaps the district is doing something with a nonprofit that you're involved in, that would be considered a non-interest and that's okay. You still have to abstain sometimes from voting in those two. Again, that's fairly rare and fortunately we don't have uh a lot of those. Okay, down to our last category. I'm gonna rocket through this because I know we just got the ten minutes left here. I'm gonna skip over the salary here because for the district, our compensation's fixed by statute. As you know, you get paid uh by your attendance at meetings or business. So that's uh not something critical. This one though.
Why does that question about that, Don? Um, yes, uh, with regard to um, you know, the amount that the board members get is, is there a difference between a stipend and, and you know, a payment for an act? You, every meeting you get a hundred dollars. Yeah, is there a difference, you know, from what a stipend is versus what the um amount is, or does it make a difference? You know, a rose is a rose by any other name. I'm just, just asking.
I, I think it's the former Steve, the roses, the rose, calling it a stipend is, is still compensation.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
So, you know, you, you do agency business, you get up to the maximum number of days permitted, you know, at the rate uh permitted, uh, and then that's it. That, that's all you can get. Obviously you can get expenses reimbursed uh because public service isn't meant to, you know, break your pocketbook at the same time either. So as you know, having traveled to meetings and things, the district will reimburse you. But there are not ways, particularly with special districts, uh to uh increase compensation.
No, what I, what you mean is, is, is what you get is what you get, but there's not a difference in terminology. It's the same no matter what you want to call it. It's, it's taxable. It's, it's all those things.
Right.
Okay.
Salary stipend.
Yeah.
Pay, meeting pay, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
You're limited. Yeah. Okay, um, you take your spouse on some official business, what can you charge to the district? Uh, the room you share, your spouse's meals, mileage, room and mileage, none.
D.
A and C.
A and C.
Yeah, A and T.
Okay, so D is correct. As long as there's not additional cost, obviously uh for the room. Uh, and obviously mileage would be the same. So um, but otherwise, yeah, you can't, can't do the meals because the spouse isn't there for official business.
Right.
Okay, the rule is actual and necessary expenses incurred by you. Uh, we do have a policy that you should be familiar with on what is reimbursable, uh what, what the rates are. Uh, if you were to get reimbursement for, let's say you went down to a board of supervisors meeting in Bakersfield. Uh, the district would uh reimburse your mileage for that. So keep in mind though, if you did intend such a meeting, you actually have to do a report on your attendance at the next subsequent meeting. Uh, the expense reimbursement forms of public records. Okay, here a local resident offers to give you the new iPhone twelve in appreciation of your excellent work. You must tell the general manager, give it to your children because they're more tech savvy. Determine the value before accepting, give it to a charity and take a tax deduction or politely refuse the offer.
P.
P.
Haven't you seen those iPhone twelve? They look good. I'm thinking about getting.
I've got one already. I don't need it.
Is it, is it good?
I've never heard of an iPhone twelve. I didn't think that was out yet. Is it out?
It's out.
Oh, wow. Didn't know.
Okay, yeah, the answer is you have to refuse, but the reason for that is because we have a rule on gift limits. And gifts cannot exceed more than five hundred and twenty dollars in a year from the source. And uh, as I've been pricing them, they look about twelve hundred bucks right now. So well over it, so that's why you can't accept it. So there's two rules on gifts. And first of all, a gift is something for which you didn't provide any consideration uh to the other person. So in our example here, somebody just wanted to basically pay you for doing your job. There's two rules. One, if the gift is more, and you can accept gifts, by the way, this doesn't mean the gifts are prohibited. Uh, there is a cap of five hundred and twenty dollars. Um, and if it's more than fifty dollars, you need to report uh that gift or the cumulative gifts from your source. So your choices really, if it's between the fifty and the five twenty, do you want to keep it? If so, you need to report it. One thing you could do in certain situations, if there's some kind of gift to get below the five twenty, you could pay, uh, pay it down. So if somebody were to offer me an iPhone uh with the twelve hundred dollars, then I would have to give them seven hundred dollars. Uh, keep it below the threshold there and I'd obviously have to report it. So again, the rule is you look at the total value from a source. If it's more than fifty dollars, you need to report. We're gonna skip over this, uh, but meals can be considered gifts too. And what often happens is in this case too, there's a lot of uh whining and dining of officials. I don't think that happens in Bear Valley very much, but uh there was a company, they were an accounting firm uh trying to get bond business, I think. Uh, and they were whining dining officials all around the state. And um, uh, this got discovered and uh a lot of people got fined for it because people weren't reporting these meals. Yeah, and they were pretty extravagant too. And there's all kinds of weird, boy, if you want to get into the weeds, there's all kinds of gift rules about whether you can accept wedding gifts. So fortunately, I think about everybody's married. So you don't have to worry about whether you can accept some gift uh at your wedding. But there are rules on that. There's rules about attending nonprofit fundraisers. So uh, take a look at those. The FPPC has a whole pamphlet uh on those uh as well. And they do get discovered. Uh, as the mayor of San Bernardino found out when she accepted membership at a golf club uh that was over the gift limit. So it happens. I'm gonna just go through some of these real quickly. Um, obviously you can't receive gratuities for doing your job. So maybe this is more staff. I know our staff does a great job uh out there. If you fix a pothole at two in the morning, please don't accept five hundred dollars from the neighbor. Uh, we're good with you getting a pastry, cup of coffee, um, but you can't accept money uh for doing your work. Uh, officials are prohibited from receiving honoraria. That's getting paid to give a speech. Uh, if it's related to district business, obviously in your personal work, you're free to do that. Be careful about misusing public resources. That includes staff time using our office uh equipment except for minimal uses. Uh, case where the San Bernardino Fire Chief uh borrowed county vehicles to uh uh basically be his U-Haul. Um, even though he was also getting a car allowance, that ended his career. Not a good choice. Another thing we, uh, staff needs to keep in mind that uh agencies routinely violate. Although now with the internet, it's a little bit harder to do, but it's sending out these mass mailers, these kind of things. You know, to ostensibly inform the public about what people are doing. But the problem is that they often would get sent, uh, coincidentally, two months before the election, uh showing what a great job officials were doing. And so the FPPC looks at these as sort of a, a disguised form of using public resources to campaign. So uh, any kind of mailed communication uh that would go out to residents that features you with, like your picture here is uh illegal. And it's interesting, almost every year, uh, some agency gets nailed for a violation here. We have restrictions on loans, as I noted before, that you can't, uh, shouldn't be receiving loans from people within the agency. Just creates too many conflicts. You can't solicit uh political support and compensation uh as an employee either. So just kind of pulling it all together here, yeah, a lot of stuff. Thanks for bearing with me as we go through all this. Take a look at the handout I gave you. Uh, that kind of is a good summary of these. And final questions to ask when you're thinking about decisions, you know, what inspires the public confidence? What's going to best uh serve the interests of our community, this whole idea? Yeah, but the public perception uh is often stronger than just the, the laws that we talked about. And we don't want these kind of um, you know, stories like what happened with LA Unified where they did a big uh iPod or iPad purchase scandal. Um, the problem was that it really wasn't a fair bidding process, that the uh company that got the iPad contract had an inside track. And while it's probably a great thing for students to have technology, the way they went about doing it was wrong. And that just kind of cast a, a pall over that whole program there. So final thought, don't end your career this way if you don't recognize that uh portly little man, that was Robert Rizzo, who was the uh uh city manager Bell uh that caused you to sit through this two-hour training because AB twelve thirty-four was in response to the Bell scandals. And he uh spent a number of years in jail. I think he's out now, but that's not where we want you to end up. We've got a lot of great resources out there from the FPPC to the Attorney General. Even uh special districts has some California League of Cities. There's a lot uh of information out there. So.
I got a quick question, Don.
Yes, Steve.
Hypothetical. So my wife and I were at the general store. We run into President Han and his wife, uh, and we're chit-chatting for a minute. And it, it's around six o'clock and I say, hey, let's grab a bite to eat at the clubhouse. And they say, great, we don't have nothing to do. So we go have dinner. Uh, and I pay for the tab. Does Director Han have to report that as a gift? Uh, because you know, it's, you work, you, how do you draw the line between friend versus, you know, uh, business? It's just, you know, so.
So if, if you and Director Han have a social relationship, the best way to avoid that is to have reciprocal payments. So that he takes you out another time uh and pays for your dinner.
Oh, yeah, but that doesn't answer the question. Uh, if, you know, if I paid for dinner, does, does Director Han have to report that on, you know, on the seven hundred form?
Yeah, so if, if your practice though is next month, Greg will take you out and pay for your dinner. The answer is no. So that if you have these kind of social reciprocal relationships. Like I used to go out with some staff members in one of the cities I worked with, we would just take turns paying for it. So one day I would pay you for the meal, next time he would.
Sure. Yeah, but what if it's just a one-off? Uh, we just, you know, it was just a coincidence. We bumped into each other. Uh, you know, it was dinnertime, let's go get a bite to eat and I paid for the dinner. Does he have to report that if it's not uh, uh, an ongoing reciprocal activity with, you know?
So the, the legal answer is yes, that's technically a gift, okay? But you know, going to the spirit of the law, Steve, what the law is looking for obviously are more the meals where somebody could potentially be trying to influence you.
Gotcha. Okay, that's a good answer.
Someone said that, you know, somebody from the uh accounting firm wants to take over the district's audits. They take you to, you know, a nice dinner uh in town, you know, at seventy-five dollars. That's the one you have to be careful about.
Got you. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, technically, yes, it's a reportable thing, but the, again, the, the the import of the law is for other things and not to, you know, ruin your evening. Oh, am I gonna have to report this or not?
Gotcha. Okay.
Having a social event with, with Greg or, you know, other, other, but, you know.
All right, thanks.
Yep. Okay, anything else? We've, we've hit our end here again. Appreciate you guys. Uh, good, uh, good exchanges. If there are other areas that would help follow up on things, we're uh glad to do that. Uh, I will be getting you uh certificates. Uh, so look for email, send it out to each of you and then just sign it and uh return it to Christie to get it in your file. And Christie, for all the staff members too, I'll, I'll just give you the form and if you could distribute it to staff uh to, uh, we'll do it that way.
Sounds good.
Great. All right. Well, again, thank you all and give you a little bit of break before the meeting.
Right, see you back in twenty minutes. Right.
Thanks, Don. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.